Our Planning Commission meeting at seven o'clock on October 25th. And Sally, or Scott, whoever's doing the roll call this evening?
I'll do the roll, thank you. Stackhouse?
Here.
Everett? Larson?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Mattingly?
Here.
Rollinger?
Present.
Schrader? Watson?
Here.
And Devoe?
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum this evening with nine, uh, seven members of the nine present.
Okay. If everybody could stand, please join me in a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, we have a request for a CUP.
Excuse me, we have the minutes.
I'm sorry. You're right. Just ready to go. Okay, sorry Sally, go ahead.
Does anyone have any changes or questions about the minutes?
Motion approved.
Moved by Devoe. We have a second.
A second.
Okay, and I will do a roll call. Stackhouse?
Yes.
Larson?
Wouldn't abstain, please, I was not attending.
Okay, thank you. Vogel?
Yes.
Mattingly?
Yes.
Rollinger?
Hi.
Watson?
Yes.
And Devoe?
Yes.
Motion passes with seven votes and one extension.
Okay. Okay, now we can go on to the CUP. Uh, we have a request for CUP 12 dash 005 for the downed single-family residence, request for a conditional use permit approval to construct a single-family residence on the property at 420 East Midland, legally described as part of Lot 19, Block 11, Stephus subdivision in Woodland Park, except part described as at 150207. The applicant is Scout Downs, sorry. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if you can recognize Dan Vogel, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I need to recuse myself from this issue. Okay. I have a conflict. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a conditional use permit, uh, single-family uses are conditional use in the Central Business District. Central Business District extends all the way over to this area, um, so that's why this, uh, something that would normally just be a permitted use, uh, is coming before you tonight. Um, I think the, uh, reason it's a conditional use is that, uh, the Central Business District is normally intended to be for, you know, business, uh, uses, uh, and, uh, you know, if a single family was going to go right in the middle of, uh, you know, Center Street, it might not be appropriate. So we have to, uh, review these things on a case-by-case basis to see if they are appropriate. In this part of the, uh, the district in downtown, it is appropriate because it's kind of an area of mixed residential and commercial uses, so it's more appropriate there. So I'll just lead you through a little, uh, presentation. Uh, this gives you an idea of the context. Uh, here's the site right here and gives you an idea of the, uh, mixed-use nature of the area. Uh, backs up behind to single-family, uh, lots. There's a single-family residential unit right next to it, single-family across from it over here, but then you get into some mixed uses and office use, dance studio, uh, they use vehicle storage here, there's a church, a preschool, and some other commercial uses over in the area. So it is a mixed-use area. This is a picture of the, uh, of the lot that, uh, they're going to build on. Uh, it's generally in this area. Um, I've been informed by the, uh, project representative that they're gonna, they're hopeful that they'll only have to take out one tree to make, uh, room for this, which is good news. Hopefully they can pull that off because there's some nice trees on the site. This is a picture of the, uh, house just to the west of, uh, the lot. Um, there is actually a vacant lot in between this house and the applicant's proposed residence. But, uh, on that note, that lot is owned by this person here, so they're all owned, uh, together. This shows, uh, the sidewalk along Midland Avenue in front and the curb cut. Um, when this sidewalk was put in, uh, all these lots on this block, including the house, were owned by the same person, so they, they made, uh, the curb cut, uh, over here because that's where the driveway to that house occurred, so they just mashed that up. With this application, they're going to have to create another curb cut, they're going to have to, uh, build another curb cut over in this area to, uh, provide access to that house so that, so that the applicant can use this to access the new house. Just pictures of the house behind it. And this is how, uh, they proposed to lay out the house, um, at the corner Boundary and Midland, um, with the driveway, uh, here, and then the house up in this area. It's a floor plan of the house, it's about a thousand square foot house, one story. These were the submitted elevations, uh, of the proposed home, um, but, uh, the applicant did provide some photos of, uh, to kind of illustrate better what they were going for because these are sort of two-dimensional and don't really give that feel. So, uh, these were photos submitted that are similar to, uh, what they're proposing minus the gigantic deck, I guess. So, uh, wood siding, uh, and, uh, windows, up, kind of a bay window up front, maybe similar, uh, architectural, uh, use of the roofline. When we, uh, review these things, uh, conditional use permits, uh, we have 11 criteria that I outlined in the staff report, and all 11 of those must be, must need to be found affirmative that they comply in order to make a recommendation for approval. And, uh, staff feels that they comply with all 11 of those criteria. And finally, this, the conditions of approval, uh, as I'd mentioned, uh, um, these are typical fees and things that we ask for, uh, with single-family, uh, single-family development, and which would be required with a zoning development permit when they come back in, and then, uh, 1H is, uh, related to the, uh, ensuring that they provide access to the, to the next-door neighbor. So, uh, I understand from the applicant that they're going to go ahead and get that done as soon as possible because they want to have that curb cut in this, this fall before it gets too cold, so that they can get that access for that neighboring property, then they can use the a- access that they do have for construction. So that's, uh, that's being addressed. So that's essentially my presentation, and I can take any questions if you have any.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Um, so, excuse me, several questions. The, I saw several other single-family residences, uh, there. Uh, at the time they were built, did, did they need conditional use permits to be in this area, or?
Well, some of the houses, uh, are probably date back to prior to zoning. Uh, zoning came into play here in 1969, so if a house was built before 1969, there was no zoning, so therefore no conditional use permit requirement. In terms of structures, uh, built, uh, more recently, um, Sally, do you know of a few in that area that?
Um, most of the single-family homes are pre-69. The recent development that occurred in that same block would be the Midland Townhomes, and that did receive a conditional use and a site plan review for those six, six townhomes to go in on. They were, uh, built on three lots and then replatted.
So I, I gather the house im- immediately to the west of the subject property was 69 or prior, or prior to 69?
It looks like it, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And the, uh, the, the, the existing property to the west, and I've forgotten the address, but they own, th- there actually is a lot in between?
Yeah, there is, um.
Gosh, how, how wide are those lots?
Well, they're 50 feet, 50 feet wide. Um, there's, uh, lots 16, 16s, or 17, 18, and 19.
Ah.
The applicant's on Lot 19. It's quite possible that this house was built across the, the lot line for 17 and 18. The, I talked to the owner of this, uh, of this lot, uh, his, he actually lives out of state, his aunt lives there, and, uh, he'd never been there, but, so he couldn't really tell me, but, uh, it's quite possible that it's built over the lot line.
So he's aware that, that there's going to be construction just to?
Yeah, he got, got to know this.
Just to his east? From the, from the photograph of the, of the lot, uh, I did notice there were several, uh, mature trees there.
Yes.
And, of course, it's, it's kind of hard to tell just from a photo.
These ones?
But, you know, I'm wondering how you'd put a thousand-square-foot residence on there and only take out one tree? But, you know, at this, at this angle, it's kind of hard to tell.
Can you have the applicant, uh, address that?
Okay, okay, good. Uh, one more question, I think it was for Sally. Oh, would you be kind enough to describe, but I think I know what it is, a, a park impact fee and, and how it's calculated?
Mm-hmm. In the dedication code of, um, of our municipal code, whenever a new residence is, uh, platted either through a subdivision, or in this case, when you take the zoning, underlying zoning, and it now becomes a residential use, then there is a requirement for a park capital fee. The amount is about $1,100. Those fees are utilized, uh, to support the development of new parks, uh, and we've, uh, obtained those throughout the year. This is, you know, justified because now you have new residents who require parks.
Sure. And would that, would that fee also apply, uh, to the construction of a, uh, a multifamily residential property?
It does. Yes, it does. Yes.
And those cannot be waived?
They cannot be waived.
Okay.
Those are impact fees.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple of other questions, but I'll save them for the applicant.
Anybody else, Clark?
Two questions.
Staff, uh, do you know the history of why the driveway is on this particular lot?
Um, well, I can surmise why it might be there.
Let's hear your best guess.
Yeah, uh, because, because the, uh, sidewalk was, uh, was in, was installed probably in the mid-'90s or, or so. Uh, this, this house was, uh, owned, these, all these lots were owned by the same people that owned the house. And the driveway has always kind of come in from this angle, so at that time, there was no need to put in additional curb cuts because they didn't need them or request them.
This lot was?
So they were just matching existing.
I see. So this lot was owned by the?
It was owned by all three, uh, yeah, all three lots were owned by the same owner.
Okay. And number two is my typical question, uh, dealing with water taps. Uh, I assume this will come out of our residential water tap budget?
Yes.
And we do, for the record, again, have sufficient water to supply this new use?
That's our understanding.
Yes.
What number of water tap is that this year?
Six or seven?
Uh, this, if it's purchased this year, it's, I believe, will be our seventh.
We're in good shape.
I know. But someday.
Okay.
We're, we're keeping track.
Okay.
That's all the questions I have, thank you, Mark.
Okay. John?
No.
Okay. You, you gave it your one shot. You gave it your one shot.
I'm waiting for Scott.
Okay. Um, I don't, I don't have anything for you either, Scott.
Okay.
Since you sat there.
Good.
Um, okay, I guess, uh, we need to bring Scott up, and if you would, say who you are and who you represent and?
Thanks for coming out tonight. My name's Scott Downs, 710 Sunrise Circle, here in Woodland Park, been a resident for 31 years. Uh, had interesting career, had a chance to build a lot of the buildings that you drive by in this community over the years. Eagle Fire, Keller Williams Building we were involved with, the old Woodland Floral Building, which is now a fly shop. Some of the buildings downtown re-verb, probably about 150 residences over the years. This lot is something that, um, we've had for, I think we determined 14 years now, 13 years? What fun we've been having for three days over the driveway issue. Um, the highest and best use of this lot is most probably five to seven years from now, when we actually have a demand for other multifamily, other things. But, yeah, close to $1,000 a year holding costs, I happen to have the building already bought and paid for from another project. This was the, the best thing to do, was to bring an affordable housing unit, even though it's just one unit, into our downtown area, and so that's what this is about. It's a cedar log-sided, uh, home that, uh, no, the bedrooms aren't huge, but it is a three-bedroom, two-bath home. So, I'm, I could lead you anywhere you want to go, but I, I can answer the tree question if somebody could show me how to get to it real quick for you.
The phone?
Yeah. That's the tree. And there's actually about 1,800 square feet in this area right now.
Ah.
And we're using the existing, um, driveway and hard pack as out driveway rather than recreate another one, so we designed around using that entry and coming into that home that way.
Great, thank you.
Is this a, is this a home that's sold?
Depending on what my wife says over the next few months, it may or may not be for sale.
There you go.
But, but at this point, the intent is a for-sale product in the low 140s.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Well, you, I think you may have already answered my question. Uh, clearly there's a, a dearth of affordable rental housing here in the city, uh, but I gather that it probably will not be a rental. It will be owner, owner occupied?
If I have my way, it's for sale. If, if I lose this battle at home, it may be a for-rent product, but it's, it's an internal argument that's happening at, at my house right now.
Understood. So, th- there is the possibility, and clearly it's a, uh, it's an infill house, uh, there is the possibility that it may be affordable housing for somebody.
Oh, without question.
Right.
Fits the multiplier for affordable housing. Um, over the years, I've had a chance to do a number of, uh, projects on our old township, 50 by 150 lots, and I find them to be incredibly valuable, especially the ones that have alley access. You can have a wonderful, small product on, on these in-town lots.
Is there, there, there is no alley behind, behind, which would be what, to the north of that?
Well, there's a deeded alley. It's not, it has not been developed yet.
I had just one other question, uh, looking at the, is it the right page here? I'm sure you know all this. Oh, the very last page describes its, uh, floor plan. In the bottom right-hand corner, it describes the model number, et cetera. There's a notation, "Win Zone 1 only."
Correct.
Wha- what's the significance of that?
There's two codes that homes are built, um, under in the United States since 1976. The HUD code, and you have the old UBC code, which is now the IRC code. IRC and modular are built, site-built and modular are built under the, um, IRC code. HUD is a federal code. 25 years ago, um, HUD code and the UBC code were this far apart. Every year, the HUD code has made three or four times more changes in their code than the UBC and now IRC code. So today, a HUD code home is a wonderful home, and they happen to be built in factories that, um, are older factories, typically off of rail spurs, so there's cost dynamics that come into the purchase of this home that are different than a modular, which are typically a little bit newer families. And, uh, that is the kind of spread that can get us down into the workforce housing multiplier.
And the, the, the significance of win zone? You know, what does that?
That is our zoning is Zone 1 win zone in the HUD overlay.
And then, I mean, does that, does that refer to, uh, velocity of wind, or? I, I don't quite?
Yeah, it's 109 mile an hour, um, wind load.
Ah, there we go, okay.
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood.
Now I know. No, 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 I, and I appreciated the, gee, it's no surprise that the HUD has been modi-, oh, never mind. Great, thanks.
You bet.
Paul? Larry?
Just expand it a little bit, Scott, on, you say it's good to meet the affordable housing multiplier, uh, so, but, tell us what you, you mean by that?
Well, we all speak workforce, affordable housing. Some of us in this room have been trying to knock this pony down for a long time. But specifically, it's a multiplier on our median household income, and what that median household income can afford to purchase, uh, given whatever the dynamics are in the lending market and, and those things. Um, it, it really says that at about $165,000, $168,000 in the Woodland Park market and under, you are achieving that goal. When you overlay that with your needs assessment, and, um, how many have we had over the years? We, we don't have affordable housing construction because we can't bridge this gap. And so, when I say to someone that this fits the multiplier for an affordable housing dynamic, when, when you bring a new product into the market, that, because it has a construction loan, it already has an appraisal in the high 140s for the finished product, and we look at the large percentage of our workforce client and what they can truly afford with that multiplier, when you get a product in this market in the, in the mid-140s on a for-sale, you're achieving something that's not being done out in the market. Thank you. I think it was important for you to explain that to us.
Yeah, I agree, the, uh, the 140s really work, you know, if you look at standard.
It, it, it brings, on an FHA loan, a young couple, well, I won't even overlay it with that, a purchaser can come into the purchase of this home with about 6.5% down to meet their closing costs and their 3% and have under a $1,000 a month payment. That hasn't really been going on in Woodland Park for a very long time.
Is this a HUD or a modular?
HUD.
So it's a mobile home?
Mobile homes haven't been made since 1976.
Is it on a foundation?
Yes.
Trust, I mean, a regular foundation?
Yes, FHA Title II. Uh, it'll be a case-on foundation, permanently attached.
What kind?
Case-ons. Um, think of cement piers that go down below the frost lines.
Mm-hmm.
Every six feet under the, and I'll stop to explain further because I know you understand this. In HUD, today, the only real difference between a HUD home and an IRC home is the floor system. In a HUD home, the steel I-beams that have axles attached to them stay in the, they're part of the floor system, they're part of the load. In an IRC home, the load comes down from the peak out to the perimeter. In a HUD home, the load lines up over those steel I-beams. So your foundation is under the steel I-beams, not on the perimeter.
Do we allow that in Woodland Park? Or is that an exception?
No, it's within the building code.
It's within the building code, yeah. I thought we were just modular one time, I don't know why I thought that. Okay. Uh, driveway paved?
No.
Just the dirt?
It's just be gravel.
Room for a garage?
Yes.
Okay. So it's gra- it's a gravel driveway, it's not just dirt?
It is. If, if you have a chance to go over there, John, it's?
I haven't driven by there.
It is hard as concrete right now, um, so we're probably not going to disturb it as much as possible.
Landscaping?
Yeah. We're going to be doing privacy fence. Um, I haven't really decided exactly what to do on the landscaping, because I, that, as you know, things that I've done, that's something that's sort of, when we get the house sitting there, then I figure out what I want it to finalize, but the answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm done.
Jeff? No? Okay, I don't have anything for you either this time, Scott.
Thank you.
Anybody got any additional questions for staff? I would be looking then for?
Open up the public comment first.
Oh, yep. This time, open up for public comment, doesn't look like we have anybody here, so.
Why not record sing?
Oh, Scott, I'm sorry, I didn't mean anybody, I'm sorry.
No, this is the first time in all the years of doing this I've ever been first on the agenda. Thank you.
And last?
Okay, seeing that we don't have any public comment, then I would be looking for a motion for approval based on staff's recommendations.
Motion approved.
Second?
Ready for roll call? Larson?
Yes.
Mattingly?
Yes.
Rollinger?
A vigorous eye for, uh, a much-needed affordable, uh, infill residence.
Thank you. Watson?
Yes.
Devoe?
Yes.
And Stackhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
So go to, does it proceed to council on the 1st of November for first reading and then final public hearing on the 15th of November?
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
The second item on our agenda this evening is, uh?
I'm going to go get you.
Oh, yeah, we need to go get, sorry.
If you can, you remember that.
I think in council, we left some.
Welcome, Dan, back to the?
They can listen.
Carry on without you, Dan.
All right.
Sorry, Dan, I almost forgot you.
Okay.
Welcome back. We need your expertise.
Okay, our second item on the agenda is a Woodland Park Municipal Code amendment to consider an ordinance to amend Chapters 2.44, 12.08, 17.08, 17.20, 17.52, 18.06, 18.34, 18.51, 18.57, 18.61, 18.62, 18.72, and 20.04 of the municipal code related to streamlining public notice requirements.
Good job.
Thanks.
You did that, so I don't have to.
We take a break now?
Yeah. Um, yeah, this is the, uh, final adoption hearing, hopefully, for the, uh, changes that we're proposing to the public notice requirements that we reviewed as a, at a work session several, uh, weeks ago, um, that we had a, a final draft that, uh, we shared with you and, uh, the city attorney comments, and, uh, we took those comments and your comments and, uh, provided this final ordinance for your adoption tonight, hopefully. Uh, just to review, the, uh, the reason for proposing these changes is that, uh, we have many different applications with many different public notice requirements with many different time thresholds. Not sure how that happened over time, but, uh, it's, uh, sometimes a, a bit of an issue for us to keep track of in terms of what application requires, how many? keep track of in terms of what application requires how many days in advance to notify people, and as we, as we've said before, notifying the public of what, what is going on out there in terms of land use changes is one of the most important things we do. And we want to make sure we get it right and give people adequate time and the adequate amount of information so that they're made aware and can comment on proposals if need be. And the three types of public notices that we do are public notices in the, in the courier, the newspaper. We have public notice signs that are placed up on the property to catch people who might not read the public notice section of the newspaper, there's got to be a few out there. And then we send letters to neighbors that are immediately adjacent to these proposed changes, so that between the three of those, you would think that people would not be caught unaware of some things that are going on in their neighborhood. The chart that we handed out with the red on it is a good summary of, it drives home the point of, of how many different dates, time thresholds do we have. So the attempt by staff here was to streamline that, streamline that to the extent possible. Some situations, it's not feasible to change, such as zoning changes, for instance, which are in the city charter and would require a vote of the public to change, so we won't be changing those probably anytime soon. But the ones that we can change, we've streamlined. Just generally, we've tried to make a time requirement of ten days to have a sign up before any kind of public hearing or land use change or administrative decision. Seven days for publication in the newspaper, which helps us right now, some of them are ten or some are fifteen, and we have to get those notices in a week before they actually publish, so this will, this will help us considerably with that. And then the signs would be up ten days in most cases. The, the reason that there's so many different chapters changed in this ordinance is because there's so many different land use actions throughout the code that require public notice. And just to walk you through real quick on page one of the ordinance, in section one, the change has to do with historic landmarks for, for properties. To change it from fifteen to seven days, that is something that this body does not deal with, but the Historic Preservation Committee does deal with. So section two is also pertaining to historic landmarks. Change those dates to make them more in line with the direction we're going in with the rest of the code. Chapter three, in terms of vacations, and it's not as fun as it sounds, that's vacations of right-of-way and easements, which you guys do see, and that's just changing those, those dates to correspond. And then section four is something new. We've actually added a definition of adjacent property owner, because that was an undefined term prior, where we had different terms for, for what we call the people who live around projects. Some, some are called surrounding property owners, some were called adjacent land owners, and sometimes it was a hundred and fifty feet, sometimes it was immediately adjacent, so we decided to standardize that as well. And it's, everybody, everybody that owns a property within a hundred and fifty feet would get a notice. Preliminary plats in section five, those are subdivisions, similar to Woodland Station, which we just saw fairly recently. Section six has to do with variances and exceptions to subdivisions, and we made a few other changes. It talked about getting names of adjacent property owners from the plats in the county clerk and recorder's office. Well, they record plats at the county clerk and recorder's office, but not with names of property owners on them, so we changed that to, the Teller County Assessor's Office is actually the keeper of those records. Section seven, we added the definition, section seven, and we had to put adjacent property owner definition in two different parts of the code. Section seventeen relates to subdivisions, and chapter eighteen is zoning. And section nine, it's just pretty much, I don't know if I need to go all the way through this, it did, wherever there's a requirement to notify the public, there's been a change. So in terms of anything jumping out that's unique, I'm not sure that I need to go through each and every detail here. We did take out the section related to amendments, which we were going to try to clean up the amendment section, because we wanted to draw the distinction between zoning and zoning amendments, rezoning and text amendments. But we, as I relayed to you at the last meeting, that started to be, to violate the one subject rule for ordinances here in the city, so we removed that section and we'll try to revisit that later. So basically, I think we, we went through this pretty, with a fine tooth comb last time, and I didn't hear any concerns from planning commission, so I think I'll just stop there and see if you have any questions that we can try to answer.
I have one question. You know, when we, when we table something here in the commission, and it drags on and then comes back, do we have to repost signs and that sort of thing? Do we do a renotice?
If it's, if you table to a date certain, you know, that you have a future meeting in, in mind, that you can say that it's been table to at that meeting, then you don't need to renotice it, because the thinking is if anybody was there that was interested in that case would, would hear that and would know which date, the new date is. If you, if you table it to a date uncertain, like we did with the light church several weeks ago, we're going to have to renotice that when they come back in, because we didn't do a date certain.
Thank you.
What we do do, though, is change the date on the sign, since that is posted, we want to make sure that the general public knows that it's been tabled to a certain date.
Thank you. You got a question, Tom?
Yes, will, will this ordinance go to council in this, in this form?
What do you mean, the kind of bold and the strikeout?
Or will it, will it look different, you know, will it?
Well, it.
Will it be marked up?
First reading, we may do that. I think it's really helpful for you guys to know what's being changed, but the city clerk has informed me that for the final reading, that the, the ordinance, the code language in the ordinance should be as it's proposed to be codified, and that if, if you want to go through and explain what the changes are, that occurs in the staff report. So there won't be strikeouts in the, in the code.
All right, I understand, thank you.
One question, is this related to this, and notices? Does the applicant typically pay for the mailings as well as the publications, or is that part of the fee?
Pays for the publication costs, we bill those later, postage as well. Do we do the postage? Postage is, I guess not, it's something that the city pays for.
It's a part of the processing fee, essentially.
I guess you could say that, it doesn't, I'm sure the fee does not cover all the costs to the city, but, but that's another, that's another subject altogether.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Do we receive a friendly rate from the courier when we, when we publish?
The city clerk goes out to bid every year for the publication fees, and so there is a government rate per their bid.
Good, thank you.
Nobody else bids on it?
Is there another paper in the city?
No. It's sent out to the Gazette, but they never bid on it.
Yeah, not that meets the circulation requirements. We have sought bids from the Gazette, but the courier is really the unlikely source.
The jackpot?
I don't think so.
It doesn't qualify, something to do with paid subscriptions.
Right, right.
I think, I think the Gazette's always a lot higher anyway.
Yes.
I think we have the lowest rate, what the courier does for us than any other, the rates for municipalities are on here anyway.
Good news. Thank you.
I don't have any additional questions for you, Scott.
Okay.
So we need to open it up to public comment?
As a formality.
Okay. And seeing that we have nobody present, I guess that would be. She's staff still. Okay, so at this point.
I move that we approve ordinance eleven seventy.
For a second. Thank you. Roll call, Vogel?
Yes.
Matt Inglee?
Yes.
Rollinger?
Aye, and kudos to staff for all of the hard work. This is a real, a real achievement.
Watson?
Aye.
Devoe?
Yes.
Stackhouse?
Yes.
And Larson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. This ordinance has not been scheduled for council, they're in the middle of their budget time right now, so we will bring this to council shortly after the first of the year when the budget's. But thank you for your hard work on this too. Good stuff.
Okay, at this point, we'll open it up to reports, and I have nothing to report. Sally?
I have just a few reminders for the commission. First of all, we have no cases for our next meeting, which would regularly be scheduled for November eighth, and then we typically do not meet the week of Thanksgiving, so there is no meeting on the twenty-second of November, so you have the whole month of November off. If we do have a case that comes in shortly, prior to the December thirteenth meeting, that will be your next meeting of Planning Commission and probably the last of the year, because we won't meet during the Christmas holiday as well. And speaking of that, we do have a volunteer holiday appreciation social that will be scheduled in December, that's scheduled for December eleventh. You'll be receiving invitations, and this year, it is going to be at the Cultural Center, and we're going to have all of our citywide volunteer committees join us together for the appreciation social this year.
City going to be there employees or not?
I'll be there.
City employees.
Not, not, only the city employees associated with the various committees, but it will include the utilities committees, the DDA, investment, community investment groups, Parks Board, and then Planning Department has four groups, yourselves, Board of Adjustment, our Keep Woodland Park Beautiful group, and the Historical Preservation Committee, so it should be quite a good time.
Do retired city employees ever, ever come to this, or can they? Are they invited or not?
No, that's a good question.
Oh.
We haven't had too many retirees, although this last year, up until this last year.
Right, right. I was thinking of Jim Salt, so I can talk to him about all the water allocations. Get out of chalkboard.
If you present it that way, he probably won't show up.
Oh, no, he will.
Okay, any comments or discussion, anything that anybody wants to talk about?
What are the fat penguins at Berkestrom Park?
Fat Penguins?
Are they there?
I don't know, you got it on your thing for planning.
It's a, it's an outdoor vendor permit that came in for shaved ice and slash hot chocolate stand in Berkestrom Park.
Okay. I just thought it was an unusual name, had nothing to do with what they sell, I understand.
Yeah. Something about the thin ice or something like that, they're explaining the name, but I can't remember. They were, I'm surprised they haven't started yet, I think they had some issues with getting electric service over there.
When I saw the name, I was thinking of Cambodia or Laos or Vietnam.
Looks like Walmex is coming along?
Yes, they have, their building zoning development permit has been issued, and they're going great guns out there. So yes, they're going along nicely, and Family Dollar and O'Reilly's, you can see those buildings going up, and then we also broke ground on the Woodland Hardware and Rental Store as well.
What's the next phase for Walmex?
The next phase would be their student housing, I believe. With this first phase, it's a, the main building, a portion of the main building, the first seventy-eight thousand square feet, which was the classrooms and the banquet hall. And then once they get that done, then they'll build.
The auditorium.
And offices and call center and the balance of the building.
They've got the building permit to go ahead and start that, I saw that on that report, right?
The first phase of the classrooms, yes.
All right, very good.
Okay. Nobody's got anything else, and we will be adjourned at seven forty-five.